What's going on and how can we help? This stuff works. The idea of thinking about things holistically, it works.
Well, how delightful to talk with you today and how inspiring in so many ways. And you are a very mindful person. I can sense it from across the table, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It was great chatting.
Likewise, thank you.
To find out more about Para los Niños and the services they provide, check them out online at paradosniños.org. The Alliance for Community Empowerment, a nonprofit in the West Valley, is the proud recipient of half a million dollars from state funds thanks to the help from Assemblymember Jesse Gabriel. The much-needed money will be used to help youth development programs in Council District 3.
So today was one of my best days in public service. I was able to present the Alliance for Community Empowerment, which is an extraordinary nonprofit here in the West San Fernando Valley that is uplifting underserved families and youth with a $500,000 check. This is money that we fought for in the state budget and we're able to bring home here to the West Valley so that this nonprofit can continue to do its extraordinary work and to serve this community that I'm so proud to represent.
This half a million dollars is absolutely a game changer for our organization. These funds will have an impact on so many individuals. Individuals like a young man that I'm going to be inviting up to speak.
As I came into the program, you know, I had a big struggles coming in, but over the time, like these people weren't really giving up on me after like I gave up on myself a few times, you know?
I am now currently working on receiving my diploma in this December as well as getting ready to take the next step into my career as a PV solar installer trainee.
One of the really special things about this organization is that a lot of people look at Canoga Park and some of the underserved parts of the West Valley, and they see poverty and they see unemployment and they see statistics. And this is an organization that sees potential and opportunity and extraordinarily talented young people. They have helped empower hundreds of young people. They have helped change this community.
People will be able to get connections to jobs as well as internships and help them find places where they can give back ultimately.
With their support network, like I was able to get myself into some good opportunities and programs that actually help give back to my community.
On behalf of Alliance for Community Empowerment in the West Valley community, we are so grateful for the support of our city council member, our assembly member. We are a community that is often overlooked and we are so grateful to have elected officials that do not overlook, that are there advocating for the needs of our community.
For the first time since the pandemic, teens got together at the Chinatown branch of the Los Angeles Public Library for a painting event at the neighboring Ord and Yale Street Park. Painter and librarian Lynn Nguyen led a class on recreating L.A. cityscape.
We have about 17 teens today being led by our YA librarian Lynn, and they are painting a Los Angeles cityscape. It's pretty exciting, not just because it's the first program, but also because it's the first time that the teens have gathered since pre-pandemic for a program.
Now that we have this park, it's an opportunity for us to do in-person programming safely for them. It's really exciting. They're talking to each other, they're socializing, they're learning about each other and sharing information, and it's just fun for them.
I feel like painting makes me like feel relaxed because doing like both school and like all the extracurriculars makes me feel anxious and also stressed a little bit. So I need to like release stress by like painting. So when I'm painting, I can like talk to my friends and also like using the brush to like express myself. So it's like a form of releasing stress.
I am a painter and I'm a librarian, but you know, when you're a librarian, you get to wear all sorts of hats. I love art and I feel like there's not enough art that is being taught in schools. So when I'm able to expose them to that type of experience, it can teach them a lot of different things about themselves that they never knew before.
It's very beneficial to like do programs in person to so like it's better to like socialize with people and exchange ideas and just learn things from others and others can learn things from you.
Now, if painting isn't your thing, how about some local music? Over at the Center for the Arts Eagle Rock, the team from the Department of Cultural Affairs held a live music and art event in celebration of the Play Music on the Porch program.
So we're here today to celebrate Play Music on the Porch Day and just get outside and reconnect with our community after not being able to create any live programming for two years because of the COVID pandemic.
We're so glad that this is able to happen and that we're able to do it safely and that we're able to like see our friends and some people we know and stuff like that and hear some music. I think it's really exciting.
To be able to do this like safely, but also getting to see everyone, it's a lot of new stuff, so it can make you really anxious, but it's exciting.
We haven't been able to gather in person again and to like connect with each other in person and look in people's eyes. And I think that that's just like what folks are missing. We're doing live music. We have three acts. We have a new band called Fainting Spells from West LA, another solo artist singer-songwriter Flora, also from West LA, and Dela Nova, a solo bassist who is usually accompanied by another session guitarist or artist. And then we're also doing a DIY zine workshop on our back porch that people can, you know, bounce back and bounce between the two.
Today, we have a zine-making workshop. To come and make your own magazine or art zine. So we have those wonderful teaching artists on site to help with that, and it's a free event. You can just come on up. So you'll be able to do art with music in the background and enjoy the day.
Follow Fainting Spells music on Instagram.
Yeah. Get vaccinated, be safe, but also have fun and play music.
In our feature story this week, Anita Bennett talks with Councilmember Mark Ridley-Thomas about his work on homelessness and why he spearheaded a vaccine mandate for Los Angeles city employees.
There are many changes underway in Council District 10, and the man who represents that area, City Councilman Mark Ridley-Thomas, is with us today to discuss some of the important issues making headlines. You spearheaded the ordinance that just passed in the city council mandating that city employees get vaccinated. Why now and why did you help lead that effort?
The vaccination rate is below what we need in order to reach herd immunity, way below that. We had to do something after all. Public employees are to serve the public, not put the public at risk. Whether you're a firefighter, a police officer, a librarian, whatever the case may be, you have to be healthy. You can't be a spreader.
Let's talk a little bit about homelessness. You did vote for the restrictions on sidewalk encampments. Why, why did you cast that vote?
This is very well-thought-out, practical ways of causing us to reclaim these streets and restore dignity to the communities that are impacted, restore a level of civility in those environments and get people the help that they need and deserve so that lives can be returned to a sense of purpose and worth. No one really wants to be on those streets. In a matter of weeks, you'll see the adoption, I believe, of the street engagement strategy.
Yes.
Where we have nurses, where we have social workers, housing navigators and the like, not police officers, working with people in ways that this city has not seen. That's what must happen. And it's our obligation to make sure that they get the help that they need.
Check out the Flight Path Museum's Hispanic Heritage exhibit. Astronaut Jose Hernandez talks about soaring to new heights and explore L.A. with Discover and Go. These items up next on Things to Do.
Celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month at the Flight Path Museum LAX. The museum will be honoring the significant contributions of airlines from the region and international uniform fashion from airlines such as TransBrazil, Mexicana, Valaris, and many more. It's a taste of Hispanic travel culture with a touch of style. Don't miss its informative and engaging narrated virtual tour to see and learn about flying fashion. Flight Path Museum's Hispanic Heritage Month Virtual Exhibition debuts Friday, September 24th. To join this virtual journey, visit flightpathlax.com. Join astronaut Dr. Jose Hernandez as he takes you on a journey not only to space, but also his journey in life. Dr. Hernandez will be featured in LAPL's L.A. Made series, where he will talk about the challenges he faced as part of a migrant farm-working family and the path he chose to become a NASA astronaut. His life story will soon be featured in the upcoming Netflix movie, A Million Miles Away. You can catch the livestream on the library's YouTube channel and Facebook page on September 23rd at 4:00 p.m. For more info, visit lapl.org/events. Explore L.A. museums and attractions through this exciting partnership between the Los Angeles Public Library and local cultural institutions. Access Discover and Go with your Los Angeles Public Library card and reserve free or low-cost passes to participating organizations. Find passes to places like the L.A. Zoo or the Grammy Museum. Want to learn more about how to take advantage of the Los Angeles Public Library and their collaboration with Discover and Go? Well, it's simple. Just go visit lapl.org/exploreLA. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Rasha Goel. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
There are things in every city that speaks to the heart and soul of every community. In San Francisco, it is the Golden Gate Bridge. In Chicago, it's the Bean. In New York, it is the Statue of Liberty. In South Los Angeles, it's the Watts Towers. Hi, my name is Rosie Lee Hutz. I'm Director of the Watts Towers Art Center Campus. Come visit the Watts Towers Art Center Campus where you'll see exhibitions, the Watts Towers of Simon Ordia, our garden studio with turtles and tortoises, and California natives. This massive man-made sculpture is made of steel, covered with mortar, and embellished with mosaic tiles, glass, clay, shells, and rocks. The Watts Towers are truly unique and received Cultural Heritage Monument status from the City of Los Angeles in 1963. Like the community, the Watts Towers have a strong foundation and recycles different types of materials to create something breathtakingly beautiful. The Watts Towers Art Center is a guardian of the Watts Towers. It provides programs, design for cultural enrichment, and museum and art education to the Los Angeles community and the world at large. With the recent adaption of the South Los Angeles and Southeast Los Angeles community plans, the Watts Towers Art Center community will continue to shine and serve as the pulse of the community.
Okay, good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 21st. I am Nury Martinez, the President of the City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield. Bonin. Buscaino. Sidiel. De Leon. Harris-Dawson. Corretts. Krikorian. Lee. Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell. Price. Ramen. Absent. Ridley-Thomas. Rodriguez. Fourteen members and a quorum, Madam President.
Okay, next order of business?
Approval of the minutes of September 15, 2021.
Mr. Corretts moves and Mr. Mr. Corretts moves and Mr. Bonin seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. O'Farrell moves and Mr. Price seconds.
Madam President, today is Tuesday and it's time for the flag salute.
Okay, we all rise for the flag salute. Mr. John Lee, will you please hear this in today's flag salute?
Absolutely. If we'd all just face our nation's flag, put your right hand over your heart, join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam President, would council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order, next.
Madam President, there is a request to hold item 27 on the desk.
Without objection.
Item one is an item noticed for public hearing. Items two through 29 are items which public hearings have been held. Corrected reports for items two and 28 have been submitted and now are online under their respective council files. Items 30 through 59 are items which public hearings have not been held. Items 60 and 61 are items scheduled for a closed session. Item 60 was considered by the Budget and Finance Committee. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Members, without objection, those items are now before us. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam President. Going to call item one special. Like to make a motion to accept the applicant's withdrawal of the determination of public convenience or necessity, and I would like to receive and file this matter.
Okay, do you have a second? Second by Ms. Rodriguez?
And item 58, I have a substitute motion for this item for technical corrections. The new motion is being circulated and the city attorney has been provided a copy to read the changes.
Yes, Mr. Price, I'll read it out. So, it adds two further recommendations. So, the first one is, I further move that the Board of Public Works Office of Community Beautification and/or the Bureau of Sanitation, as appropriate, be directed or authorized to prepare, process, and execute the necessary documents with and/or payments to the above-named organizations or any other agency, organization, or entity as appropriate in the above amounts for the above purpose, subject to the approval of the city attorney if needed. And, I further move that the Board of Public Works Office of Community Beautification be authorized to make any corrections, clarifications, revisions to the above transfer instructions, including any new instructions in order to effectuate the intent of this motion, including any corrections and changes to fund or account numbers. Said corrections or clarifications or changes may be made orally, electronically, or by any other means. Moved by you, we need a second, I believe.
Is there a second, Mr. Price? Mr. Ridley Thomas seconds that. Do you have any other specials, Mr. Price? Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Madam President, I'd like to hold item 29 for comment, please.
Do you have any others, Mr. Ridley Thomas?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Corretts?
If this works, there we go. I'd like to hold item two for comments, and I'd also like to change item 42 to a receive and file. It's a reward motion and the perpetrator is in custody, we believe, so no longer any need for that reward.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second that without objection, thank you. Mr. O'Farrell?
Madam President, item four for comments, please.
Oh, sorry, can I have item... Wanted to call item 59 special for a substitute motion, and I believe the city attorney has the motion.
Yes, I have it. So, the moving parts of the substitute are, I therefore move that City Council, subject to the approval of the mayor, one, transfer $1,455,000 from the Zoo Enterprise Trust Fund, number 40E/87 cash balance, to account number 87V187, and transfer an appropriate therfrom to the Zoo Fund, number 100-87, within the following accounts. A, account number 3040, contractual services, $1,400,000; account number 1090, salaries, overtime, $45,000; and account number 3160, maintenance materials and expenses, $10,000. And then, two, authorize the city administrative officer to make technical corrections as necessary to the above controller instructions to implement the intent of these actions. Presented by Councilman Ramon, and we need a second.
Who's your second, Ms. Ramon? Mr. Ridley Thomas, thank you. Ms. Ramon, do you have any other items?
Nope, that's it, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I call item number 31 special for the purposes of...
Can you repeat the item one more time?
31, item 31, and I have a motion to disapprove this item and the contract.
Do you have a second?
Second by...
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Members, are there any other specials this morning? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, we're going to go ahead and vote on the following items. Items three, items five through 26, and item 28. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
So, Madam President, on the close action, item 60, the matter has actually been settled for an amount below the threshold required for council approval, so no action needs to be taken on item 60. No action on item 60. And, the record, so everybody knows, item 60 is the Keel versus City settlement.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we're going to move on to public comment.
As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466, and then press the pound key. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once submitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star six to unmute. Again, call 669-254-5252, use meeting ID number 1605358466, and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once submitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star six to unmute.
To members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have up to one minute per item to speak, three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment, please speak to the items before beginning general public comment. We'll tell you when your time's up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're on topic, you'll get one brief warning from me or the president. At that point, if you don't immediately get clearly on topic, or again stray off topic, you'll forfeit the rest of your speaking time and we'll move on to the next speaker. We'll take 30 minutes total of public comment, and the items open for public comment are items one, 30 through 59, and 61. That's one, 30 through 59, and 61. For members of the public calling in to speak, when it's your turn, an automated Zoom voice will prompt you to press star six on your phone to unmute yourself. If you don't do so, council staff will prompt you once more. At that point, if you don't press star six and unmute yourself, you'll forfeit your time and we'll move on to the next speaker. Finally, if you're listening to the council meeting on your computer channel 35 or other device, and you're on the phone, when it's your turn to speak, please turn down the volume on those other devices right away. Because of feedback and the time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, it will cause a lot of confusion if you're listening on the other devices. And with that, Madam President, we are ready to begin public comment.
Okay, let's go ahead and take the first speaker.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
My name is Alex and I'll be speaking on general public comment.
Sorry, we're Speaker, we're having trouble hearing you. Could you repeat that, please?
I'm going to speak on general public comment.
Sure, you have a minute, please begin.
Performative, complicit, these are the things that define LA City Council. You want to enact a 300-foot ban on your homes. We are your employers. We don't get to clock out at the end of the day when we're living in your city. If you do a shit job, we're going to tell you you're doing a shit job. Do you know what it means to be a public servant? If you don't like that people talk shit to you or hold you accountable, then quit. This shows where your priorities lie. You have racists doxxing people who are out there actually helping your citizens. They get doxxed all the time. You say you love the diversity of Los Angeles. Well, where were any of you when people were getting stabbed outside of We Spa or LAPD was shooting us with rubber bullets? Where were you? You say you love women of color, you love immigrants, like make LA what it is. These people are the homeless people that you are denying rights. You don't even listen to the people who speak. You don't have any input from homeless advocates or from the people themselves and...
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Zachary Warma, calling on general public comment, and is item 29 available for comment?
So, 29's not open for public comment, but you can talk about it during general, so why don't we set the clock for a minute? Please begin.
Thank you, Mr. State Attorney. Good morning, Council President, Councilmember Zachary Warma, Legislative Affairs Manager with the Downtown Women's Center. First, DWC is calling in strong support of item 29 and the creation of the Housing Now Program to provide 10,000 flexible housing subsidy units in support of the Historic Streets Engagement Strategy. Even the most robust service-forward and trauma-informed outreach will ultimately come up short if we cannot offer pathways to permanent housing solutions tailored to the unique needs of those currently residing in encampments. These 10,000 subsidies will be a major tool in reducing unsheltered homelessness, but with nearly 29,000 individuals living in tents, sidewalks, parks, and other locations not meant for human habitation, this council must continue to act with urgency to provide more permanent housing solutions, and we thank Councilmember Ridley Thomas for bringing forward this important motion. On the topic of the Unarmed Crisis Response System, we know that unmeant... Sorry, item five, unmeant mental health needs remains one of the greatest issues facing unhoused Angelenos. Nearly 30% of all unhoused women in the LA COC had a serious mental health issue. We figure that...
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Yes, my name is Jamie. I would like general public comment, and is item 27 available as well?
Item 27 is not open for a public comment, but you're free to talk about it during general, so why don't we set the clock for a minute? Please begin.
Thank you. My name is Jamie York, I'm on the Recede Neighborhood Council, but I'm calling in as an individual, and I'm calling in in particular about the item regarding public banking. Our neighborhood council passed a resolution in support of this, and we would really like to urge Council President Martinez to schedule the motion for a full council vote. Right now, the city of LA pays over $100 million in fees and over $1.3 billion in interest yearly. To me, that's money that could be going back into funding our city and making it better, and, you know, we want LA to be at the cutting edge of things that are happening within our state, so we really need to have a hearing on this item. So, again, I just want to urge that you list it for council, because it's hard for neighborhood council enough to pass a community impact statement, and so it just, it kind of sucks.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Good morning, my name is Pace, and this is a general public comment.
Please begin, you have a minute.
Yes, thank you. The city's Economic Development and Jobs Committee approved a resolution for Los Angeles to take the first steps to create a public bank in May. We thank city council members for their leadership and urge Council President Martinez to schedule a motion for a full council vote. As the previous caller stated, LA taxpayers right now are paying millions in fees and interest, and this is money that through a public bank could be instead reinvested in communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Thank you, it's Eric Previn, and I'll speak on a number of items and also provide a general public comment.
Sure, so you have three minutes for items one, 30 through 59, and 61, followed by a minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Okay, thanks. First of all, you know, you've got, item one is a bit of a concern. It's good that they're not going to go forward with the alcohol at the 7-Eleven, but the note about what's going on in that area was highly disturbing, and I know you could read about it on City Watch today. I put it in there so that people could see, because I think that Mr. Price needs to do something about that, not just agree that no more booze can come in. He has to actually take some action. I just think people need to feel safe in their own community. By the way, there's a lot of shifting money around per the original intent without any details, which is highly worrisome, because all of these not-for-profits are not the same, and if you're allowed to make changes without noticing the public, it's very bad. I know that everybody thinks you're so high-minded and wonderful, but you're not, and we know that over and over and again. And one, you know, LA Conservation Corps has multiple items on the agenda today. And this is a group that you just have to understand is highly political. It's not a little political, because people on all sides of the spectrum care about the environment, but they play ball only with the people they want. And that is a truly appalling thing in a market that's so vast. Very, I mean, Mike Piers out there announcing that he wants to reduce you all to half your pay and get more of you, which is an odd play by the man, but we'll see what happens. Obviously, more representation would be good, but you try selling more of you to the public, it's going to be very, very hard. But so, 1.4 million to the Conservation Corps, good lord! And that's from current price, so maybe the Conservation Corps could help out with some of that crime. I mean, it was really upsetting to read about that, I want to say. And also, I want to just mention that you didn't talk about the Garcia settlement, which is the 5611 law, so we did need to know about that. And I was pleased to see Harris Dawson backing away from Conduent. People will remember Conduent as Xerox Solutions. Here we have a company that had the contract for citation, parking citation slash pain for the public services for years, and then, as is always the case, they couldn't get it together at City Hall to have a proper RFP, so they extended by a year. And then the pandemic, so these guys are just rolling around in additional money and watch, as I said in my article this week, as the parking citation revenue rises. And regarding the appointment to the Disabled Access Appeals Commission, I applaud the appointment, I think, of Cheryl Revkin, but I want to emphasize, like the Emmys, hashtag disabled so white. There are four of five folks on this commission are white, and just one Latino. I don't know if that represents the city the way we want on such an important commission, but I think we should look at that.
You can go into general, Speaker.
I beg your pardon?
You can go into general if you wish.
Yeah, I do wish, thank you. Well, in general public comment, I just... Well, in general public comment, I just want to draw attention to the fact that the city council and the county board of supervisors are in pitched battle at the moment. The council president refused, along with the mayor, to appoint anyone to the Board of Supervisors, a blue-ribbon commission on homelessness. And the supervisors are in pitched battle with their sheriff. They canceled their closed-session meeting today, which is unheard of. It never happens so late in the game. And are busy sending Max Huntsman, the dog that does not hunt, who has a stuffy nose, to go get the sheriff by, you know, the media, by saying that he won't show up at their little oversight commission meeting. Here's a rule for all of the groups. Oversight has to come from folks who are not embedded deeply, okay? Insiders like yourselves can't be, who is, where was I reading about the insiders? Actually, an outsider, oh, we've got a candidate for mayor from the Central City Association, Jessica Lal. This represents corporate interests. So as someone quipped, well, great, finally we'll have some representation for corporate interests at City Hall. That's a joke because that's all that's represented there. I won't go through the Motorola Solutions and all of the other Englander, Knobby, and Allen firms you can read about in City Watch that are on the dole and continue to be on the dole, thanks to the work of Mitchell Englander and the man holding down the fort, John Lee. Enough, enough is enough. We need to clean out the wrongdoing at City Hall. And the only way to do that is to proceed with the proper indictment. Enough is enough.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Previn.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
My name is Dan, general public comment, please.
Sure, so you have a minute, please begin.
Good morning, residents of Los Angeles listening to this meeting. I call pretty often for public comment. My main motivation for this is pushing back against the vaccine passport motion put forth by Martinez and O'Farrell. If you read the comments on the City Clerk page for this motion, you will see the people are overwhelmingly against this. This is great, but if we are not connected with each other and able to talk and organize with each other, we will lose this battle. I am with the LA County Libertarian Party. We are looking to form a single-issue coalition against, across all party lines, to push back against this and help save our city. We don't need you to join the party, but join as human beings who believe in bodily autonomy and the right to choose what's right for our families. You can contact us at LPLAC.us. Give us a call or an email saying you're ready to take human action with us. We have a plan to push back, but we need every last human being mobilized and active if we are to succeed. LPLAC.us, takehumanaction.com. Thank you.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Jessica Rogers and I'd like to speak on general comment.
Sure, you have a minute, please begin, Speaker.
Congratulations, city council, for voting to protect your homes from vandals and criminals. Safety is your right. By the way, the actions of Mike Bonin's campaign are deplorable. Doxing the two heads of his recall and gaslighting is disgusting. Worse even are Bonin's responses to the suffering created by his choices. When Katrina Schmidt's home was vandalized while she was there one day after the doxing, Bonin had nothing to say about it and he took no responsibility for it. Same is for all the women who have been brutally raped on the boardwalk every night while he let the homeless rot there. What about the sounds of the Venice dog crying while he was burning alive because a junkie had fire fever? When you are more interested in retweeting lies than to care for your constituents, it's time to resign and let the rest of us lovingly and compassionately clean up your mess. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Harris Rosenbloom. I can speak on general public comment.
And you have a minute, please begin.
On behalf of the Los Angeles Business Council, we'd like to express our support for item 29, Councilmember Ridley Thomas's Housing Now program. Everyone here understands the severity of the homelessness crisis in our city and the dire need to be told a process for creating housing in a more efficient and cost-effective manner, but also finding ways to move people off the street into stable homes. 10,000 ongoing flexible housing vouchers will go a long way to keeping people housed and supporting LA's pipeline of new homeless housing units. We understand that this program is part of a larger right-to-housing framework and street engagement strategy. The right-to-housing framework has been one of the key priorities for our working group on urgent homeless solutions. And a right-to-housing framework would move the city toward providing the necessary infrastructure and resources to provide a roof over the head of every Angelino. We must find ways to encourage urgent and bold action, to hold our city accountable, to create housing solutions that will move people off the street and into homes quickly and effectively. The LABC thanks Councilmember Ridley Thomas for your steadfast leadership on this issue and we are excited about continuing to work-
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
I'd like to speak on all available items and general public comment, please.
Sure, so you have three minutes for items 1, 30 through 59 and 61, followed by a minute for general public comment. Please begin, Speaker.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Fabel. Apologize to Ms. Archie for your gross disrespect to this 90-year-old, 90-pound little black woman, Martinez. You're a disgrace to female humanity until you do what you never will. All votes today will be vote traded, votes yes votes. That's why, that's how you can give corrupt council people, you can give Dawson millions of dollars for luxury offices while people die in the street. Declaration of the State of Emergency, number 30. The state of emergency is the Los Angeles corrupt, sleazy council. Want us to believe that an alien race just came down and fired a ray gun and created 60,000 homeless on the street with three to eight people dying every day? No, it's you, these people's policy that created this. Didn't just happen. Homelessness crisis, it didn't just happen. These, this corrupt city council, we have to change this public. CD7 Rodriguez, you have youth job training program. We could use some of those funds for the black farmers market that Ridley Thomas is abusing, trying to, with $5,000 a week, fees and police harassment. That's Ridley Thomas. Ridley been pimping the black community for 30 years. In 1960, there were 103 black elected officials. Today, there are over 9,000. That's an 8,700% increase. These people don't represent us. That's the problem with the black community, one of them, major. We have no representation in a representative form of government. These people are pimps, criminals, the Three Stooges sitting there. Item 53, you have LAPD blowing up a whole neighborhood. Now they're going to study it with $5 million, what that'll do. Instead of getting in there, getting FEMA and whoever to reimburse these people, they're crying for help, price. This guy owns a relocation company. He makes money off of evictions, evictions. This is our representative. He specializes in low-income areas. Prohibited targeting and picketing your residences, of course you're going to pass that one. You're criminals. I think I'll go on to public comment now.
Okay, please begin.
Is that okay, sir?
Yes, please begin.
Okay, thank you. I could hardly hear my ears. Dawson, at a neighborhood council meeting a few days ago, actually denied council file 180957 where this corrupt city council gave him $380,000 and $20,000 a month lease to take the black community's unemployment office, our labor center. The same corrupt council gave UCLA Labor Center $15 million, an institution with $10 billion in reserve. This is what he wants to do with the unemployment office.
And the city council, nor the city is in charge of EDD services. Long before I was in office, the state of California ended EDD services at that building. The building's been vacant. And if you know anything about the Crenshaw area and Crenshaw businesses working because they lost 300-
Speaker, are you still there?
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, Daniel Gus, all items and general.
Sure, so you have three minutes for items 1 and 30 through 59 and 61, followed by a minute for general. Please begin.
Yeah, item 48, deadly Melrose Avenue robberies now require overtime at the LAPD instead of their regular salaries, which you slashed. You shouldn't have slashed those salaries to begin with, now you're paying overtime. Item 52, disability appeals, Dr. Revkin. I sued for ADA violations and won a suit against the city requiring the city to retrofit the City Hall media room per the judge's orders. You missed your deadline to appeal it. And if you don't make those retrofits per the judge's orders, you're going to get slammed with a massive legal bill for ignoring the judge's orders. Item 53, horrible explosion due to LAPD incompetence. It wasn't a miscalculation of math, it was the racist disregard for black and Latino community. So why hasn't anyone been fired? Why hasn't the chief been hauled into field live questions? Because with city council, black and brown lives only matter when you're running for office, but not in reality. Item 56, who wrote this? You don't say southerly of Van Owen, you only say south of Van Owen or southerly from or southerly to Van Owen, not southerly of Van Owen. Whoever wrote this needs to go back to school and learn how to write clearly. Item 57C, who wrote this? You don't say something is spoken orally. Orally means in the mouth. You mean verbally, otherwise the context is wrong. In court, they say oral arguments, but that's wrong too. Item 51 and 59, I'm going to take together. Close the zoo, send the animals to sanctuaries and turn it into homeless housing. The infrastructure is already there. Save a fortune that you can spend on restoring LAPD salary or open food banks with the money you're saving. And why do you need overtime for the zoo? What's new about the zoo, which was closed for most of the past two years, where you actually need to do overtime? Oh, by the way, a little point of order for city council. I hear today that Mr. Leon, not DeLeon, his real name is Kevin Leon, is running for mayor, another candidate with a fake name, but a point of order for Mr. Fabel. And the point of order is regarding the flag salute. If Kevin Leon is running for mayor, shouldn't he first lead this council in an error-free flag salute? Google it, it's on YouTube. You can't be mayor of LA, Mr. Leon or Mr. DeLeon if you can't actually say the pledge of allegiance and do a flag salute. Google it, it's on YouTube. And let me see if I have anything else before I go into general public comment.
Sure, please begin.
Let's see. Well, I haven't said I'm going to start. I want to make sure I don't have anything left. I still have nine seconds before my general. Now I'm going into general, I have exactly one minute to go. Mike Fuer's corruption continues. His deputy, Jonathan Peralta Bizlig, was recently slapped with a warning letter by the State Bar of California for maliciously mishandling my personal information. Then two weeks ago, he presided over illegal meetings of the Police Permit Review Panel, which took illegal votes. When I sent him a media inquiry, Mr. Bizlig said that he, doing so constituted harassment and that I may no longer contact him even for city business at his city email address, which immediately resulted in a $10,000 retaliation claim against the city, which will be a slam dunk small claims win. His doing this is also an ethics violation as he is using city assets to hide his personal troubles. Further, Bizlig and Ryan Duckett then canceled the next police permit meeting, meaning that their inability to serve the public honestly has resulted in meeting cancellations. You may want to explore replacing Bizlig and Duckett. Pay attention, you have a big legal bill coming.
Thank you.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
My name is Angela and I will be giving general public comment.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
My name is Angela and I will be giving general public comment.
I'm having a little trouble hearing you, Speaker. Can you repeat that?
My name is Angela and I will be giving general public comment.
Thank you, yes, we'll set the clock for a minute. Please begin.
I am a team lead with Sunrise Movement LA. The city's Economic Development and Jobs Committee approved the resolution for Los Angeles to take the first steps to create a public bank in May. And I'm urging Council President Martinez to schedule the public banking motion for a full council vote. And I want to communicate my strong support for the creation of a public bank for the city of LA. By reimagining banking as a public utility rather than private interest, a public bank provides an opportunity for the public sector to cut costs while simultaneously providing social benefits, support investments in low-income housing, critical infrastructure projects, clean energy, and community-centered economic development, all of which I believe are needed for our city to become more livable. So I look forward to seeing this motion approved by the LA City Council so we can continue making progress on these important projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hello, my name is Estella Swaddis-Hamilton. I'd like to speak on all available items and after general public comment, please.
Yes, so you have three minutes for items 1, 30 through 59 and 61, followed by a minute for general public comment. Please begin, Speaker.
Thank you very much. The people working in law enforcement will need to decide whether they enforce illegal policies. I have confidence that they now see how you truly feel about them. I hope those people will stand up for our US Constitution. Our rights will not be bargained and contradicted. In the same ways that you demand, we respect your authority. Our Constitution-protected rights are to be demanded. The people will not be intimidated by what has been scribbled down by tyrannical cowards. Now for my public comment, please.
Sure, please go ahead.
Thank you. In regard to the vaccine ordinance, I have heard council leaders say, "Your rights just do not work for me anymore," and "Trust the science." This reminds me of the type of rhetoric used in the eugenics movement. In 1915, San Francisco promoted positive eugenics as a way to counter race degeneracy. They warned against the moron girl and those who were abnormal as a biological threat. Eugenics was integrated into the curriculum of California's public schools. Textbooks contained the evidence supporting the cause. Immigrants considered mentally defective were deported, with about half being Mexican or Filipino. The eugenics movement was the inspiration to people like Adolf Hitler in 1940. We, the people, are opposed to the vaccine-proof ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, I'd like to speak on item number 39 and follow by general public comment, please.
Sure, so you have a minute for each, please begin.
Hi, councilmembers. I do support item number 39 to clean up all the graffiti in State Los Angeles. I would, I also have another idea that I think I should, that can make this go further. My idea is that you guys should look into speaking with lawmakers in Sacramento to create a new law that would require anyone purchasing spray paint cans to provide photo ID so that we can keep a track of who is purchasing the most spray paint cans. So that way, we can track down who is tagging the city up. And I do agree with number 39 to clean up- And I do agree with, uh, number 39 to clean up graffiti, to spend the funding to towards, um, cleaning the community, making the, um, city look better. And I'd like to move on to general public comment, please.
Sure, please go ahead.
Yes. Council members, um, I would like something to be done regarding the recent robberies that I've been hearing on the news that, that happened two weeks ago on Melrose. And this is unacceptable that this has been going on, on Melrose Avenue, where we've been hearing a series of robberies going on, where some crazy guy comes up and puts a gun at someone, tries to, um, rob them. Now, I would love for your council, the city of Los Angeles, to support a motion to give the city residents the right to carry concealed weapons. That's what we want in the city of Los Angeles. And carrying a concealed weapon would help scare away a thief or robbery suspect from trying to, um, attempt to rob any one of us. Look at democratic states like the state of Colorado. They have concealed weapons. Why can't we have the same here? That's what the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Thank you, Speaker. And Madam President, that's the end of the public comment period.
Okay, members, we're going to go ahead and vote on item one, item 30, items 32 through 41, items 43 through 46, items 48 through 57. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Please move on to item number two, call special by Mr. Coetz.
Thank you, Madam President, for hearing this today, and thank you to Councilmember O'Farrell for co-presenting this with me and hearing it in his committee. When I was on the Metropolitan Water District Board back in 2014 through 16, I thought we were seeing the height of the drought, but we weren't, unfortunately. Uh, and according to scientists in the journal Science, this could be the worst mega drought in 1,200 years, and climate change is making it worse. When we started doing some research about what other states are doing, we found they're all focused on negotiations updating the Colorado River Compact, and we wanted to make sure that we're similarly focused. This time with our incentive programs at DWP, I want to be certain that we don't just pay to remove lawns only to replace them with rocks that heat up a neighborhood. If we're going to incentivize turf removal, we need to receive multiple benefits, like a watershed approach, rainwater capture, and native drought-tolerant plants. This time, we also want to be sure our messaging with DWP and MWD is consistent with our urban forest. We must be certain to let people know to keep watering our trees, or we will lose them. And lastly, given especially item four on the agenda today, Light Up Navajo, which will finally bring electricity to some of those without it in the Navajo Nation, which I strongly support, I want to be sure that with our water issues, we'll be participating with the Water and Tribes Initiative. Along with 40 million people in two countries in seven states, the Colorado Basin also provides water for 29 native tribes. And we need to be sure their voices are at the table and collaboratively involved. And with Adele at the helm of MWD and our brilliant water team led by Marty at DWP, I'm confident that we could find holistic one-water solutions to get us through to 2,100. And I look forward to the report back and ask for an I-vote.
Thank you, Mr. Coetz. Let's go ahead and vote on this item. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Let's move on to item number four, call special by Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Madam President. Los Angeles ended a 40-year agreement back in 2014 with the Navajo Nation where we purchased dirty coal to, uh, power up the city of Los Angeles, providing only modest financial benefit to the Navajo Nation while polluting the air and the earth around the nation again for 40 years. We ended that agreement, and, uh, in the last couple of years plus, we have been working on a new power purchase agreement of 100% renewable energy to help them transition into renewable energy, photovoltaic for the most part, which would lead to a complete equal generation of power from the old contract into the new one, which is, of course, the only option for the future. Light Up Navajo is part and parcel of that agreement, which is still being hammered out, but the term sheet is near complete, and that'll be coming before council sometime in early '22. Councilmember Kocorian and I recently had the honor and the privilege of leading a delegation from the city that included LA DWP leadership, Marty Adams, Commissioner Cynthia McLean-Hill, where while we were there, we discussed several projects, including the option for the city to improve ties and strengthen bonds to the Navajo Nation by joining an effort known as Light Up Navajo. The picture that you see on the screen is Mr. Kocorian and myself with Dion and Jaylin Chi and their daughter, Navajo residents who have benefited from this program that before they lived without power and water their entire lives. Now, Jaylin Chi is a nurse who helped nurse, um, several Navajo Nation members through the worst COVID outbreak and epidemic in the nation at the early part of the pandemic. And Dion is a homesteader, and their daughter is a champion horseback competitor. And they are thriving thanks to Light Up Navajo. Uh, this picture is in Loop, Arizona, which is on that, the Navajo Nation. The goal of Light Up Navajo is to bring power, water, mobile, internet to all citizens of the Navajo Nation. As we all know, mutual aid is a term for the collaborative work done between agencies or and/or jurisdictions to further similarly beneficial goals. These mutually beneficial goals include LA DWP's own line men and women to train, to travel to the Navajo Nation. We have the best line men and women in the country to give the expertise to the Navajo Nation. It's a jobs program for them, and it's a job program for us. The city has mutual aid agreements with each jurisdiction in LA County and throughout the state. In this instance, joining the effort to Light Up Navajo is a nationwide partnership with the American Public Power Association, and it'll allow for city-owned and ratepayer-funded assets to be better maintained. We're going to learn a lot from this, not to mention building a stronger spiritual bond with the Navajo Nation, which I think is very, very important in the name of helping to save the planet for this and future generations. Smart and mutually beneficial partnerships such as this are key to ensuring consistent access to power. The LA DWP owns over 10,400 miles of power transmission throughout the state and region, including parts of Navajo, which is another reason this link is so strong and can be strengthened even more. The Navajo Nation is the largest of any sovereign nation within the United States, encompassing over 27,000 square miles of land. Unfortunately, roughly 15% of people living within Navajo are still without power or access to basic services such as running water, lights, internet, and mobile, and not to mention air conditioning, where it is unbelievably hot during the summertime. Whenever the city acts, it must do so purposefully. Colleagues, let's get in the business of improving relations with friends, and whenever possible, improving the lives of others in a mutually beneficial agreement. Thank you, and I ask for an I-vote.
All right, thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on that item. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, let's move on to item 27. Members, this is an item that I introduced, um, last week, um, which is regarding the targeted protest ordinance sent to us by the city attorney's office. Members, I don't have to tell you that this ordinance is not, this isn't a stunt, an overreaction about what we've seen escalate on social media with people targeting some of us, with now folks showing up at our homes at every hour of the day. And I think it's clear to me that these protests are now starting to escalate more and more. And what I'm really concerned about is the escalation of, um, an actual violent event taking place in anywhere of our neighborhoods, particularly our residents. Those folks who have a disagreement with what we, what we legislate here in this body, people are welcome to call during public comment. They can certainly protest any one of our decisions outside of this building, which is a public facility. But to take this to our homes, um, to take this to our neighborhoods, and to gradually starting to escalate the tone in which these activists target some of us is completely out of control. And I think we need to do something now before something terrible happens. So with that, members, I'd like for us to move quickly and swiftly on this item and to ensure that those of us who make tough decisions feel a little bit more protective, and more than anything, our families who certainly did not sign up for this. So with that, Madam Clerk, can you please open the roll? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, two noes.
Okay, let's move on to item 29. This was call special by Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President and colleagues, um, you may recall on March 30, or more specifically, March 3, of this year, we asked the city team led by the LA Housing Department in close collaboration with the CLA and the CIO to develop a proposed framework to initiate a right to housing in Los Angeles, which revolves around four components: street engagement, interim housing, permanent housing, and finally, and rather importantly, prevention. Four components. And over the past week, we have made significant progress to advance two concrete-related initiatives. First, the street engagement strategy that left this body unanimously. We approved it, and we are on with it and about it. And today, we now address the issue of housing now. We underscore the sense of urgency that is applicable in this instance. It's simply not appropriate. It's discordant to speak about a crisis and not behave with a sense of urgency. So this motion, co-presented by Councilmember Bonin and Price and seconded by Councilmember Coetz, proposes a collaboration between the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles. And I want to take this opportunity to say that we will not do our best work on the issue of homelessness in this region. If we do not find a way to collaborate with the county of Los Angeles, if we don't find the county doing business with us in the way that we need it to be done, I want to assert without fear of contradiction here today that we won't do our best work. We've got to figure this out. It means, by way of this motion, uh, we should provide housing coupled with supportive services for up to as many as 10,000 people experiencing homelessness, including those with complex medical and behavioral health needs. And so, colleagues, as we discussed at length, uh, at our last meeting, successful street engagement strategies, uh, it depends on having a ready supply of affordable housing, permanent supportive housing, uh, to place unhoused clients without delay. If it's a crisis, we have to act with urgency. Rent subsidies are also critical to activating the properties that LA City has and would like to purchase through, for example, Project Home Key. There's a whole lot of ways to do this. This is not a one-size-fits-all proposition. We can be imaginative. We can be creative. We can be flexible. But we have to be results-oriented. As you already know, the existing flexible housing subsidy program, Rental Assistance with Services, is a program that was started by Dr. Mitchell Katz, the county's former director of health services, who understood that permanent housing, that is to say, a home, was the best possible prescription he could write for a person experiencing homelessness. We know the remedy, so let us get to work and fulfill, or let us to say, fill this much-needed, uh, prescription. It's time. We're overdue. I declare housing now. Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item. Open. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bonin, I did not see your, did you press your, oh, there you are.
Thank you very much.
Apologize. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas, uh, for introducing this, and thank you for allowing me to be a co-sponsor on it. Uh, colleagues, uh, you can either read this as a, as a nice, pithy slogan or as a really dense, uh, wonky motion, uh, and it certainly is both of those. But let me summarize what this is, because this is smart, this is fast, and this is a cost-effective way to get people off the streets. Uh, one of the, the best, most successful housing programs that exists in the county of Los Angeles. One of the best, fastest, most cost-effective, limber approaches to addressing homelessness has been here in front of our eyes for a number of years, and it's been done by the county health department. Uh, the Flexible Housing Subsidy Pool, call it Housing for Health, call it what you will, it is a program that says, "Let's not wait to purchase or build new brick and mortar." It's a program that says, "Let's use rental subsidies, let's use master leasing to get people in off the streets quickly, to bring them indoors, not six weeks after they say yes, but the day they say yes." The county has been doing this remarkably well for a very long time. It started with people who were using, frequently using, emergency rooms and trauma centers. Mitch Katz said, "This is costing us a fortune. What if we use healthcare dollars to put people indoors?" It worked. People stayed housed, and the county saved money. In April of 2015, I actually proposed that we do this, and I got it built into our comprehensive homelessness strategy later that year. But the bureaucracy came back and said, "No, we want to build brick and mortar, or we want to own brick and mortar. We don't want the ongoing costs of subsidies and services." This works. We proposed it again in October of 19. I am so glad that, 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 that there are other people who are now echoing the importance of this program, because what's really key about this isn't just that it's fast, but that it's cost-effective. This is one of the ways we got people off the beach so quickly over the summer. But this is actually less expensive than many of the interventions we rely on. In many cases, this is less expensive than bridge housing, this is less expensive than tiny homes, and it is the actual end result. So this is a great thing to do. And we often talk, candidly, uh, we often talk about our tensions with the county, and this relationship between the two bodies ain't all that great. But this is a way, with an existing county program, that we can build and strengthen a relationship that actually has a track record of success. So this is a very important thing that we're doing. I know it sounds detailed, but this is where the rubber meets the road. This is how you get people indoors. Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on this item. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Let's move on to item 47, Mr. Harris-Dalson.
Uh, I have a request that we receive and file, item number 47.
Okay, I'll second that for you. Okay, I'll second that for you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on this item. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen nyes.
Okay, members, let's go ahead and prepare to go into closed session. Sergeants, please prepare the room.
Right now, you have the power to influence how Los Angeles looks for the next 10 years. As a resident of Los Angeles, you expect certain things from the city government, whether it be picking up your trash on time, fixing potholes in the street, or making sure your neighborhood is safe. But how do you make sure you're successfully represented in City Hall in order to receive such services? It starts with voting for our city representatives. But who you get to vote for is based on a district map and where you live. The district maps determine which neighborhood you live in and the city representatives you can elect. Right now, you have a chance to impact how these maps are drawn, and you won't have this chance again for another 10 years. This process is called redistricting, and it's as important to democracy as voting. So what is redistricting? It's a process where the entire country redraws the maps that determine each electoral district for the local, state, and federal government. Each resident lives in a city council district, and each of those districts is represented by one city council member. Districts are designed to have about the same number of people, each resulting with its own needs and concerns. It's important for districts to be drawn so that everybody in each community is represented. It's important for districts to be defined fairly and equally so that each district has the same number of people and that minority groups have an opportunity to elect representatives of their choice. Fair redistricting, make sure this happens. Representation matters. Right now, you can influence how the map that defines your district and your community is drawn. Our independent commission, called the L.A. City Council Redistricting Commission, has a responsibility to make recommendations on what the district should look like. We want to hear about your community. Who lives there? Which streets define its boundaries? What are the shopping areas, schools, churches, and ethnic communities that make your neighborhood special? To tell us about your community, visit lacccrc2021.org to learn more about redistricting. Get involved and make your voice heard. In a democracy, your voice is your power. Use it today.
This process is called redistribution of districts, and it's as important for democracy as voting. So what is redistribution of districts? It's a process in which the entire country re-traces the maps that determine the electorals for the local, state, and federal government. In Los Angeles, all residents live in a particular district of the municipal council. Each of those districts is represented by a member of the municipal council. It's important to trace the districts so that all people in each community are represented. Communities change. People come and go. It's important that the districts are defined in a fair and equitable way so that they have the same number of people and so that the minorities have the opportunity to elect representatives of their election. A fair redistribution ensures that this happens. Representation matters. You can include in how the map that defines your district and your community. Our independent commission, called the Comision de Redistribución de Distritos del Ayuntamiento de Los Ángeles, has the responsibility to make recommendations on how the districts should be. We want to know your community. Who lives in it? What streets define its limits? What are the commercial areas, schools, churches, and ethnic communities that make it special? To tell us about your community, write to redistricting.lacity@lacity.org or join an public audience. Involve yourself and make your voice heard. In a democracy, your voice is your power. Use it today.
In Los Angeles, it's the city's municipal area that lives in each municipal area. Each municipal citizen is a member of the municipal senate. The areas are used to elect citizens. Each municipal is a representative. Therefore, each municipal citizen is a representative. The change in the municipality and the migration of people is important to the municipality. A fair redistribution is important. Representatives are important. How do you elect the municipality that you represent? The municipal senate is responsible for deciding how the municipality looks. Before electing the municipality, we need feedback from the municipal citizens. We want to hear your opinion. Who lives there? What distance is the border? Is it a shopping area, a school, a church? What are the unique municipal entities? To know more about the election, visit lacccrc2021.org. Speak your voice. Your voice is your strength. Use it today.
Are you going to influence today the fate of Los Angeles since the 10th year? As a resident of Los Angeles, you have a special advantage in the city. Do you want to destroy your city? Do you want to destroy the streets? Or do you want to protect your city? But are you sure you're going to be respected in the city? This is because of the votes that are voted on. Have you traced the district map? The location of your town? And who are the voters? Now, you have a right to influence the votes. It's called redistricting. Or is it the voting of the district? What is the voting of the district? It's the process of determining the map of the entire country that is traced to the local district. In Los Angeles, the resident voted in one district of the municipal council. And one member of the municipal council voted for each district. It's the district that is voted on according to the same people. And each district has its own needs and expectations. It's important to vote to ensure that the voters are respected. There are some changes, some leaving and leaving. So it's important to vote. Today, it's the voting of the same people. And it's important to vote to ensure that the minority voters are supported. It's important to vote. Have you enjoyed the voting of the district and the municipality? Our independent commission, that is called the L.A. City Council Redistricting Commission, is responsible for recommending the voting of the districts. We want to know your community. Who voted there? The streets that are traced to this? What families, heritage, and ethnic communities are special? Visit lacccrc2021.org to learn more about the voting of the district. Have you enjoyed and visited the city? In a democracy, you have a right to speak your voice. So use it today.
Let's talk about how to divide the country. You have the right to decide how Los Angeles will be in the next 10 years. As a resident of Los Angeles, you have something you expected to receive from the government. It could be a virus infection, a pandemic, or damage to your life. But are you sure that in the public opinion, you will be successful in getting votes? First, you have to give your votes to the voters. But who will be chosen? Will it be the city that you rely on? The city will decide who you rely on and who you can choose. Your votes will have a role in designing the city. And you won't have this again in 10 years. This is called dividing the country. And it's important to the citizens to vote. What is dividing the country? It's a process that the country is designing to decide on the new cities, states, and中央. In Los Angeles, everyone relies on the municipal council. Each city has one voter. Each city is designed to have the same number of citizens, so that they have the same demand and concern. It's important to decide the city. So that everyone in each community can have a voter. Since the citizens are changing and people are moving, it's essential to decide the city in a systematic and consistent way so that they have the same number of citizens. And the minority have a chance to choose a voter. Dividing the country in a systematic way makes you sure that this will happen. Choosing a voter is important. Your votes will have a role in designing the city. And the citizens who you rely on. We are the municipal officials of the new municipal council. As municipal officials, we have a role to give advice on what the city should vote on. We want to know the citizens' votes. Who is there? What's the city's schedule? Shopping areas, schools, boats, and the people of the country who are here are special. Visit lacccrc2021.org to see more information about dividing the country. Come and hear your votes. In the public opinion, your voice is the power. Use your voice today.
Hello, I'm Nury Martinez, and I serve the City of Los Angeles as the president of the city council and council member for District 6. For 50 years, Ed Proctor has provided health and next services, nearly 200,000 patients per year, with employment services, job training, mental health services, and child development services. Their efforts to serve the community, take care of our neighbors, and preserve the dignity and respect of the San Fernando Valley are unmatched. This organization has been a staple in our community, especially throughout this pandemic as they continue to provide vital community services in this unprecedented time. When I was elected L.A. City Council president in January of 2020, I had no idea what the year would become. But our city council had to adapt, develop innovative ways to reach people and find strength within ourselves to keep our community strong. El Proyecto del Barrio has done just that and has come to the other side ready to tackle challenges that may come their way.
If COVID-19 has made it hard to pay rent or utilities, the California COVID-19 Rent Relief Program may be able to help. To check eligibility and apply, visit housingiskey.com or call 833-430-2122.
...
Not it, not it. Again? Hey Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
With the weather starting to heat up in Los Angeles, L.A. Animal Services would like to offer tips to keep pet owners and their furry family members safe. Never leave your pet alone inside a vehicle. It's against the law and your car can quickly overheat, even with the window slightly open, which can be fatal for animal companions. Always make sure pets are welcome where you're going, and if not, that they are safer at home. Pets like people can easily dehydrate in hot and humid weather. Give your pet extra water and always make sure your pet has plenty of fresh water to drink. Reserve playtime and walks during the early mornings or evenings when it's cooler outside. When walking your pet outdoors, pay attention to the pavement, sidewalks, and sand. Check the temperature with your hand. If it's too hot to touch, it's too hot for your pet's paws. Protect your pet from the sun. If your pet has to be left outdoors for a while, make sure there is plenty of shade and water for your furry friend. And help prevent sunburn by rubbing hypoallergenic sunscreen, made especially for your pets, on sensitive areas like their nose, tips of the ear, and belly. Know the signs of heat stress and overheating. If your dog or cat begins very rapid, noisy breathing, has trouble swallowing, and starts to look very distressed, they could be having a heat stroke. Get the animal out of the heat and apply cold, wet towels to the back of their head. Place cold packs wrapped in towels or plain wet towels between the back legs and on the belly. Cool off your pet and take them immediately to the veterinarian. For more information on tips to keep you and your pets safe, visit lacsservices.com.
You may have noticed that at some intersections, the walk sign at the crosswalk starts a little earlier than the green light for people driving. This is called a leading pedestrian interval. It's a transportation term that means those of us using the sidewalk get a 3-7 second head start over cars. Giving pedestrians just a few seconds to fully enter the crosswalk makes it much more likely that drivers who are making turns will see them. This very simple timing change can have a big impact on street safety. Leading pedestrian intervals reduce crashes between people driving and people walking by as much as 60%. Moving L.A. forward.
Yo, Cali, we see you, baby. Yo, COVID-19 vaccines are out. They're available and they're saving lives.
Listen, they are effective in preventing death, serious illnesses, and hospitalization from COVID-19.
Yo, listen, man, get your vaccine. Keep yourself, your family, and your friends safe, please.
And the best part is $3.99 and it's super easy. Click on the link to get more information.
Yo, Cali, we see you, baby. Mi gente, apoyemonos uno al otro. Ponse la vacuna contra la COVID-19. Es gratis. Ayuda a protegerse a usted, a su familia, y sus amigos. Depende de usted. A click en el enlace para ver como, porque, donde, y cuándo te la puede poner tu vacunita.
Hi, I'm Los Angeles City Council Member Paul Corretts.
And I'm Los Angeles City Council Member Marquise Harris-Dawson. We have some very important information to discuss, some news you need to know about getting vaccinated.
We want to let every single working person in the city of Los Angeles know that the city has passed a law requiring every employer to provide each worker with four hours of paid time off to get their COVID vaccination. And another eight hours of paid time off to be used, if needed, for any temporary symptoms that would keep that employee from feeling well enough to work.
That's right. It doesn't matter if you work for a small employer or a big company, or even if you're employed by the city of Los Angeles.
With this law in place, your employer is required to pay you for the time you need to get vaccinated.
We know that your highest priority is making ends meet, and that might have kept you from getting vaccinated. So often, it seems easier to put our own health on the back burner.
But it's important to remember that even if you've already used up your sick time, you are still covered to go get your vaccine.
So go and get your shot.
For yourself, and your loved ones, and your community.
Together, we can make this pandemic a thing of the past. But it takes all of us. To find a vaccination site near you, visit vaccinatelacounty.com or call 833-540-0473.
I already got my vaccination.
It was quick, easy, free, and confidential.
Los Angeles, hope is on the horizon.
Get vaccinated, L.A., so we can see la familia y los amigos and go to concerts again and enjoy life like we used to.
I want our businesses fully staffed again safely.
There are sites across Los Angeles where you can get easy access to doses that are free and effective.
I did it for my family and for my community.
Be a part of the solution, and get vaccinated, L.A.
Renters and landlords are desperate for this help. The assistance will not only support the families that have fallen behind in their rent and living paycheck to paycheck, but it's also critical for the mom and pop landlords in our city who are struggling over the past year to make their mortgages and to sustain their buildings. Anyone who is already on a waiting list here in the city of Los Angeles, if you reapply with the state, you will absolutely become a priority. They will have enough staff to personally assist you on the phone or online.
No neighborhood in the city of Los Angeles, whether in San Pedro or in Woodland Hills, no neighborhood in Los Angeles should have to endure rampant drug sales, gun violence, and living in fear of what's happening at a property just around the corner from a park. Enough is enough at this San Pedro property. Enough is enough in any neighborhood where any family feels less than secure because of drugs and guns and gangs. To other neighborhoods where properties similar to this are plaguing your families, that there is a way to get help, contact our office. You can do that through lacityattorney.org. You can call us at 213-978-8340.
We want to make sure that all of our community members, regardless of which side you live on, Eagle Rock Boulevard, or north or south of Colorado Boulevard, that you're safe when you're walking across the street. This is just the beginning. This is not the end. This is just the beginning in how we can make our streets in L.A. safer.
This park, the Matthews Street Park, right in the heart of Boyle Heights, is L.A.'s first Prop 68 park to break ground.
Parks within walking distance of every neighborhood in the city are so vitally important. We're striving to bring a park to within a 10-minute walk of every resident inside of the city of Los Angeles, and this park is going to help us get there.
I want what everyone else wants: more trees, more environmental benefits for our communities that need it the most, like right here in our very own Boyle Heights.
We really took the opportunity to change, to transform, to draw energy and creativity out of our staff, and I think you can really see those results when you walk through the aquarium today.
September is National Preparedness Month. During this time, efforts are made to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for disasters and emergencies. Start by making a plan for how your family will communicate before, during, and after a disaster. Talk to your kids about preparing for emergencies and what to do in case you are separated. Build a kit of supplies that will last several days after a disaster for everyone living in your home. Make sure that provisions are made for all family members who have any special needs. Finally, be sure to factor in the family pets. For more information and tips on emergency preparedness, visit ready.gov. Councilmember Kevin DeLeon took part in the groundbreaking for the Matthews Street Park in Council District 14. This new Boyle Heights park will be the first in Los Angeles built through funding sources outlined by Prop 68. Proposition 68 authorized $4 billion in bonds for state and local parks, environmental protections, and water infrastructure projects. The Los Angeles City Department of Recreation and Parks wants to give Angelenos extra time to swim this summer. Seasonal hours for public pools have now been extended until September 26. Extending seasonal pool hours will allow residents to stay active and beat the heat until the summer season officially ends. Extended hours will only apply to select pools throughout Los Angeles, so find out more by calling 311, or you can visit laparks.org. Celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month at the Flight Path Museum LAX. The museum will be honoring the significant contributions of airlines from the region and international uniform fashion from airlines such as TransBrazil, Mexicana, Valaris, and many more. It's a taste of Hispanic travel culture with a touch of style. Don't miss its informative and engaging narrated virtual tour to see and learn about flying fashion. Flight Path Museum's Hispanic Heritage Month virtual exhibition debuts Friday, September 24. To join this virtual journey, visit flightpathlax.com. Join astronaut Dr. Jose Hernandez as he takes you on a journey not only to space, but also his journey in life. Dr. Hernandez will be featured in LAPL's "LA Made" series, where he will talk about the challenges he faced as part of a migrant farm-working family and the path he chose to become a NASA astronaut. His life story will soon be featured in the upcoming Netflix movie, "A Million Miles Away." You can catch the livestream on the library's YouTube channel and Facebook page on September 23 at 4:00 p.m. For more info, visit lapl.org/events. Explore LA museums and attractions through this exciting partnership between the Los Angeles Public Library and local cultural institutions. Access Discover and Go with your Los Angeles Public Library card and reserve free or low-cost passes to participating organizations. Find passes to places like the LA Zoo or the Grammy Museum. Want to learn more about how to take advantage of the Los Angeles Public Library and their collaboration with Discover and Go? Well, it's simple. Just go visit lapl.org/exploreLA. And that's a look at some things to do.
Not sure who to contact in Los Angeles when you have to request bulky item pickup, graffiti removal, report animal-related services, notify the city of illegal dumping, pothole repair, street sweeping, find city resources, pay your LAPD W P bill, and so on, and so on, and so on. Well, thanks to the updated MyLA311 app, you have the answer to all your questions in the palm of your hand. Just visit the App Store on iOS or the Google Play Store on Android and download the free MyLA311 app. How does it work? Well, let's take a bulky item, for example. It's way too big to fit in your car, right? Just open up the app, touch the "Create a Service Request" tab, and this takes you to the "Create Service Request" page. Under "Popular Service Requests", right on top of the list is bulky items. Touch the tab and a new window opens up. If the item does not belong to you, touch the "No" button and fill out the required information. Check this out: You can hold and drag to move the pin or enter the street address or intersection below. Moving the pin is handy when the location needed does not quite match up to the nearest address or intersection, such as along park trails, the LA River, or on vacant lots. Hit the "Done" button when you are ready to move forward. Our new MyLA311 system will now inform you of other open service requests at the same location to avoid taking duplicate requests. Next, touch "Details." You'll notice there's quite a selection of bulky items to choose from. Once the item and quantity are selected, you can help us by providing even further details by touching the select location of the item. You can even add more than one item to this service request. Once all the items are added, touch "Done." If you haven't registered for an account, we'll talk more about that in just a bit. You can enter your contact info or choose to submit anonymously. Next, you can add a photo by taking one using the app or by using an existing picture on your phone. It's especially helpful to city departments if you include comments about hard-to-find locations, such as "next to this address in the vacant lot under the palm tree." You'll notice a targeted service date has just been added. This is the date you will need to have your bulky items out on the curb by 5:00 a.m., if not out already. Then, all you need to do is hit "Submit" and confirm your service request, and you're done. A service request number will pop up. From here, you can create another request for this or another location, return to the homepage, or exit the app. But before you go, you'll see we provided the information of the appropriate agency handling your specific request. This will help you follow up if necessary. Let's go back to the homepage to check out some more details. Now, in order to view your service request, you first have to log on or register for an account. If you have an LAPD W P online account, you can use that login information. If not, you can still create your own MyLA311 account. The process is very similar to most online accounts. You can also find city facilities near your current location by selecting the "City Info" icon. You can either enter an address or touch the funnel icon to narrow or expand your search. Simply select the areas or services you are looking for, and then touch the icons that pop up on the map. You can look up information about city services from our City Services Directory. Other options include "City Bill Pay" and even viewing city social media fees using City Hall News. Now, if you prefer to use the service from your computer, simply go to lacity.org and click the 311 icon, and then select your choice from the menu. MyLA311: It puts the power of City Hall in your hands.
Right now, you have the power to influence how Los Angeles looks for the next 10 years. As a resident of Los Angeles, you expect certain things from the city government, whether it be picking up your trash on time, fixing potholes in the street, or making sure your neighborhood is safe. But how do you make sure you're successfully represented in City Hall in order to receive such services? It starts with voting for our city-- It starts with voting for our city representatives. But who you get to vote for is based on a district map and where you live. The district maps determine which neighborhood you live in and the city representatives you can elect. Right now, you have a chance to impact how these maps are drawn, and you won't have this chance again for another 10 years. This process is called redistricting, and it's as important to democracy as voting. So what is redistricting? It's a process where the entire country redraws the maps that determine each electoral district for the local, state, and federal government. Each resident lives in a city council district, and each of those districts is represented by one city council member. Districts are designed to have about the same number of people, each resulting with its own needs and concerns. It's important for districts to be drawn so that everybody in each community is represented. It's important for districts to be defined fairly and equally, so that each district has the same number of people, and that minority groups have an opportunity to elect representatives of their choice. Fair redistricting makes sure this happens. Representation matters. Right now, you can influence how the map that defines your district and your community is drawn. Our independent commission, called the LA City Council Redistricting Commission, has the responsibility to make recommendations on what the district should look like. We want to hear about your community: who lives there, which streets define its boundaries, what are the shopping areas, schools, churches, and ethnic communities that make your neighborhood special? To tell us about your community, visit lacccrc2021.org to learn more about redistricting. Get involved and make your voice heard. In a democracy, your voice is your power. Use it today.
Hablemos de la redistribución de distritos. Ahora mismo tienes el poder de influir en el aspecto que tendrá Los Ángeles durante los próximos diez años. Como residente de Los Ángeles, esperas ciertas cosas del gobierno de la ciudad, tales como recoger la basura tiempo, arreglar baches en la calle, o garantizar la seguridad en el vecindario. Pero, ¿cómo te aseguras de estar bien representado con éxito en el ayuntamiento para recibir dichos servicios? Para muchos de nosotros, el primer paso es votar por los representantes de nuestra ciudad. Pero las personas a las que puedes votar dependen de un mapa del distrito y del lugar en donde vives. Los mapas del distrito determinan en qué vecindario vives, y por lo tanto, cuáles son los representantes que puedes elegir. En este momento, tienes la oportunidad de influir en la forma en que se trazan estos mapas, y no volverás a tener esta oportunidad hasta dentro de 10 años. Este proceso se llama redistribución de distritos, y es tan importante para la democracia como votar. Entonces, ¿qué es la redistribución de distritos? Es un proceso en el que todo el país vuelve a trazar los mapas que determinan los distritos electorales para el gobierno local, estatal, y federal. En Los Ángeles, todos los residentes viven en un determinado distrito del concejo municipal. Cada uno de esos distritos está representado por un miembro del concejo municipal. Es importante trazar los distritos de modo tal que todas las personas de cada comunidad estén representadas. Las comunidades cambian, la gente llega y se va. Por eso es importante que los distritos estén definidos de manera justa y equitativa, para que tengan la misma cantidad de personas y asegurar que las minorías tengan la oportunidad de elegir representantes de su elección. Una redistribución justa asegura que esto suceda. La representación importa. Puedes influir en cómo se dibuja el mapa que define tu distrito y tu comunidad. Nuestra comisión independiente, llamada Comisión de Redistribución de Distritos del Ayuntamiento de Los Ángeles, tiene la responsabilidad de hacer recomendaciones sobre cómo deberían ser los distritos. Queremos conocer tu comunidad: quién vive en ella, qué calles definen sus límites, cuáles son las áreas comerciales, escuelas, iglesias, y comunidades étnicas que hacen especial al vecindario. Para contarnos sobre tu comunidad, escríbenos a redistricting.lacity@lacity.org, o únete a una audiencia pública. Involúcrete y haz que se escuche tu voz. En una democracia, tu voz es tu poder. Úsalo hoy.
Guéic变경에 대해서 이야기해봅시다. 지금 여러분은 로스앤젤레스의 향후 10년을 기대하게 할 영향력을 가지고 있습니다. 이 기회를 놓치지 마세요. 로스앤젤레스의 주민으로서 당신은 시정부로부터 제시간에 쓰레기를 수거하는 것이라든지 문풍파인 도로의 보수 또는 여러분의 동네가 안전한지 확실하게 하는 것과 같은 특정한 것을 기대할 것입니다. 그러나 이러한 서비스들이 시청에 성공적으로 전달되고 진행되고 있다고 어떻게 확실할 수 있습니까? 우리 중 많은 사람은 우리의 시대표부 선거를 시작합니다. 그러나 투표할 대상은 지역 지도와 거주 지역 기반으로 합니다. 지역 지도는 어떤 동네에 여러분이 사는지 그리고 여러분이 선출할 수 있는 대표부를 결정합니다. 지금 여러분은 이 지도들이 어떻게 도출되는지 영향을 줄 기회를 가지고 있습니다. 그리고 다음 10년 동안은 이런 기회를 얻지 못할 것입니다. 이 절차를 구획변경이라고 합니다. 그리고 민주주의에서 투표만큼 중요합니다. 그렇다면 구획변경이 무엇입니까? 그것은 이 나라 전체가 지역, 주, 연방 정부에서 각각의 선거구를 결정하는 지도를 다시 그리는 절차입니다. 로스앤젤레스에서는 시 의회 지역에 사는 각 거주자, 그리고 그 지역들의 각각이 시 의회 멤버의 하나로서 대표합니다. 지역들은 같은 인원수로 적용되며 그 자체 필요와 관심사로 결과가 발생합니다. 그래서 각 대표하는 공동체 모두 도출되는 것은 지역에 중요합니다. 공동체 변화와 사람들의 이동으로 각 지역은 같은 수의 인원과 소수 집단이 그들의 선택한 대표부를 선출할 수 있도록 공평하고 동등하게 정의하는 것은 지역에 중요합니다. 공정한 구획변경은 이런 일들을 확실하게 합니다. 대표자가 중요합니다. 지금 여러분은 어떻게 지도에 여러분의 지역과 여러분의 도출된 공동체를 정의하여 영향을 줄수 있습니다. LAC 의회 구획변경 위원회로 불리는 우리 독립위원회는 그 지역이 어떻게 보여야 하는지 권고를 하는 책임이 있습니다. 지역을 도출하기 전에 우리는 여러분과 같은 거주자에게 피드백이 필요합니다. 우리는 여러분의 공동체 의견을 듣고 싶습니다. 누가 그곳에 사나요? 어떤 거리가 그곳의 경계인가요? 쇼핑 지역, 학교, 교회, 여러분의 이웃의 특별히 있는 소수민족 공동체들은 무엇인가요? 선거구 재조정에 대해 자세히 알아보려면 lacccrc2021.org를 방문하세요. 참여하여 자신의 목소리를 내십시오. 민주주의에서 당신의 목소리가 당신의 힘입니다. 오늘 그것을 사용하십시오.
Mayinfluensiaran mo na ngayon ang magiging katangian ng Los Angeles sa darating na sampung taon. Bilang residente ng Los Angeles, may mga partikular na bagay kang inaasahan sa pamahalaan ng lungsod. Pangungulat kaman ito ng basura mo sa taktong oras? Pag-aayos ng mga butas sa kalsada? O pagpiyak na ligtas ang iyong lugar? Ngunit paano mo masisigurong mayroon talagang kumakataon sa'yo sa lungsod para matanggap mo ang ganyan mga serbisyo? Nagsisimula ito sa pagboto sa mga kinatawan ng ating lungsod. Tinutukoy ng mga mapa ng distrito ang lokasyon ng iyong tirahan? At kung sino ang mga kinatawan ng lungsod na pwede mong iboto? Ngayon, may pagkakataon ka ng ma-influensiaran ang pagtatakda sa mga mapang ito. Tinatawag ang prosesong ito na redistricting, o muling pagsasaayos ng distrito, at kasing halaga ito ng pagboto para sa demokrasya. Ano ang pagsasaayos ng distrito? Isa itong proseso kung saan inaayos ng buong bansa ang mga mapa natutukoy sa bawat distritong panghalalan para sa lokal. Sa Los Angeles, nakatira ang bawat residente sa isang distrito ng Concejon ng lungsod. At kinakatawan ng isang miembro ng Concejon ng lungsod ang bawat distrito. Itinatakda ang mga distrito na magkaroon ng tinatayang parehong bilang ng mga tao. At nagkakaroon ang bawat distrito ng mga sariling pangangailangan at alalahanin. Mahalagang magtakda ng mga distrito upang magkaroon ng kinatawan ang lahat ng miembro ng bawat komunidad. May mga pagbabago, may mga umaalis at lumilipat. Kaya mahalagang tapat at patas natukuyin ang mga distrito. Sa gayon, ay magkaroon ang bawat distrito ng parehong bilang ng mga tao. At upang magkaroon ng pagkakataon ng mga pangkat ng minorya na maghalal ng kanilang mga kinatawan. Mahalaga ang mga kinatawan. Bahagi ka na sa pagsasaayos sa mapa na tinutukoy sa iyong distrito at sa iyong komunidad. Responsibilidad ng aming independent commission, na tinatawag na LA City Council Redistricting Commission, ang pagbibigay ng mga rekomendasyon sa dapat maging hati ng mga distrito. Gusto naming makilala ang iyong komunidad. Sino ang nakatira dun? Aling mga kalsada ang tumutukoy sa mga hangganan nito. Ano-ano ang mga pamilihan, paaralan, simbahan, at etnikong komunidad na dahilan kaya espesyal ang inyong pamayanan? Punta na sa lacccrc2021.org para matuto pa tungkol sa pagsasaayos ng distrito. Makibahagi na at iparating ang iyong sala obin. Sa isang demokrasya, kapangyarihan mo ang boses mo. Kaya gamitin mo na ngayon.
Mapuod reng kan bangked may kan. Kanan i kun ni amnath kamnot wa Los Angeles ja pen yangai niigsipik hangna. Naithana puasai na Los Angeles. Yom mi sien ti kun kathwong waj dei rap jang fai barihan khong meong. Mew waj beeng kane kya truwe la, zam sam luun bon thon. Rui tham hai levag baa khong kun plod pai. Da jae nee jai dey yangai waj nei salawakar jem i pu ti beeng ta peen seeng than kun de sambret. Peu hai dei rap barihan lau na. Gorn uen tong reem jang jang long kanean seeng hai pu than khong meong. Da jae leek hai dey bang na. Jang keun yu gop han ti kee lae ti yu asai khong kun. Han ti kee jang kamnot ya ti kun asai yu la pu than ti kun samman leek dey. Bad nii seeng khong kun samman mi pohn to gank rang han ti. La jae mi mi okad bang nii iik jen siit bi khang na. Grubon gaan nii reek waj gank bankeed mai. La mi kwam samkhan to pracha thipati. Po po gak gank long kanean seeng. La gank bankeed mai ku arai. Nuk grubon gaan ti thang pretej jang rang han ti peu kamnot kee leek tangan thong thinn, brat, la rathban gla mai. Nei Los Angeles, tu khon asai yu nei kee sapa the sabaan. Cen da la kee jem i pu than nei sapa meong dey nuhun. Tu kee jang oak bamha hai mi jamnon prachakon ta taog gan. Cen jang jang hai mi kwam tokan. La khok gomwon tam gank pai tam thong thinn. Rui peen sien samkhan ti jang jang kamnot kee kee. Doi hai tu khon nei da la chumchon dey mi pu than. Neng jang chumchon mi gank peyenek nek, la mi pu khon yai keo ok. Cen jang peen jang jang kamnot kee yung yutitam la samorap. Peu hai mi jamnon prachakon ta taog gan. La khon gloom nai mi okad dey leek pu than tam ti tokan. Gank bankeed mai yung yutitam jang jang nee jai dey waj sien nan jang jang kee. Gank dey mi toi than peen reng samkhan. Kanan nii seeng khong kun samman mi pohn to gank rang han ti kamnot kee. La chumchon ti kun asai yu. Khanagamgaan Bankeet the sabaan meong LA mai khong ra. Peen Khanagamgaan Istra. Mi nati ni gank hai kham neenam waj kee khon mi laksna yangai. Reo tong jang saap khomun chumchon khong kun. Mi kai yu thi na bang? Thon shen nae kamnot kee kop kee. Laeng shopping, broreen, boat, la chumchon chaat pann dai bang thi tham hai ya ti kun yu mi kwam pise. Pa ti la ccrc2021.org peu du khomun pumteum reng gank bankeed mai. Keo pai mi sorn rwoom da tham hai khon dey yin seeng kun. Nei Rabo Pracha Thipati, Seeng Khok Huut Ku Paling. Chi siit chi seeng lei wun nii.
Hello, I'm Norrie Martinez, and I serve as CEO of Los Angeles as a president of the City Council and council member for District 6. For 50 years, Edri Ector has provided health clinic services, nearly 200,000 patients per year, with employment services, job training, mental health services, and child development services. Their efforts to serve the community, take care of our neighbors, and preserve the dignity and respect of the San Fernando Valley are unmatched. This organization has been a staple in our community, especially throughout this pandemic as they continue to provide vital community services in this unprecedented time. When I was elected LA City Council President in January of 2020, I had no idea what the year would become. But our city council had to adapt, develop innovative ways to reach people and find strength within ourselves to keep our community strong. El Proyecto del Barrio has done just that, and has come to the other side ready to tackle challenges that may come their way.
If COVID-19 has made it hard to pay rent or utilities, the California COVID-19 Rent Relief Program may be able to help. To check eligibility and apply, visit housingiskey.com or call 833-430-2122.
Si COVID-19 ha dificultado sus pagos de renta o servicios públicos, es posible que el programa Ayuda con la Renta de COVID-19 de California pueda ayudar. Para verificar su elegibilidad y para aplicar, visite housingiskey.com.
Not it. Again? Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it.
With the weather starting to heat up in Los Angeles, LA Animal Services would like to offer tips to keep pet owners and their furry family members safe. Never leave your pet alone inside a vehicle. It's against the law, and your car can quickly overheat, even with the window slightly open, which can be fatal for animal companions. Always make sure pets are welcome where you are going, and if not, that they are safer at home. Pets, like people, can easily dehydrate in hot and humid weather. Give your pet extra water, and always make sure your pet has plenty of fresh water to drink. and always make sure your pet has plenty of fresh water to drink. Reserve playtime and walks during the early mornings or evenings when it's cooler outside. When walking your pet outdoors, pay attention to the pavement, sidewalks, and sand. Check the temperature with your hand. If it's too hot to touch, it's too hot for your pet's paws. Protect your pet from the sun. If your pet has to be left outdoors for a while, make sure there is plenty of shade and water for your furry friend. And help prevent sunburn by rubbing hypoallergenic sunscreen made especially for your pets on sensitive areas like their nose, tips of the ear, and belly. Know the signs of heat stress and overheating. If your dog or cat begins very rapid, noisy breathing, has trouble swallowing, and starts to look very distressed, they could be having a heat stroke. Get the animal out of the heat and apply cold, wet towels to the back of their head. Place cold packs wrapped in towels or plain wet towels between the back legs and on the belly. Cool off your pet and take them immediately to the veterinarian. For more information on tips to keep you and your pet safe, visit laanimalservices.com.
You may have noticed that at some intersections, the walk sign at the crosswalk starts a little earlier than the green light for people driving. This is called a leading pedestrian interval. It's a transportation term that means those of us using the sidewalk get a three-to-seven-second head start over cars. Giving pedestrians just a few seconds to fully enter the crosswalk makes it much more likely that drivers who are making turns will see them. This very simple timing change can have a big impact on street safety. Leading pedestrian intervals reduce crashes between people driving and people walking by as much as 60%. Moving LA forward.
Okay, members, we're back into open session. Let's go ahead and vote on the following items. Before I do that, we've got a substitute items. We have a substitute motion for items 58 and 59. So let's go ahead and vote on whether to substitute. Open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those items are now before us. Let's go ahead and open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, let's move on to item 42.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to change this to receive and file as a criminal incident that occurred at UCLA no longer requires a reward because someone has been arrested in that case.
All right, thank you, Mr. Corretts. And I had agreed to second that earlier today. So let's go ahead and open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, let's move on to item 31. Mr. Harris Dawson.
You, Madam Chair and Members, I want to withdraw my initial motion to deny this contract and change my motion to a motion to receive and file this item and instruct the Los Angeles Department of Transportation to report back on or before October 21st, 2021 on the progress of the low-income payment plan function. Colleagues, we've been at this for about two years and four months where we asked Conduent, this contractor that's before us today, to implement a program to allow people to sign up on an app to pay their tickets on a monthly basis if they qualified for low-income support. And we've gone back and forth and it's still not done. And so we want to make sure we send notice to them that this is very, very important to us. We spent a lot of time this morning on homelessness. One of the ways homelessness starts is a person gets a fine, that fine doubles, it triples. They lose their car. They lose their car, they lose their job. They lose their job, they lose their apartment. So these things are interconnected to our most important issues. And so I ask for your support in this motion to send a strong message to both the Department of Transportation and to the contractor that this is a priority for this body.
It's been seconded by Mr. Bonin. Let's go ahead and open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, what's before us now?
Special one.
Mr. City Attorney, we need to reopen public comment for this item.
Yes, so let me read it all into the record so the public knows what is before them. So the motion was presented by you, Madam President, and it reads, "The League of California Cities will hold its annual conference in Sacramento, California, September 22 to 24, 2021. And each member city has voting rights for the business items that would be considered the final assembly. Final assembly will include several actions that require a vote of its members' cities. The city should have a representative designated to participate and vote on matters presented to the assembly. The league requires that voting delegates be appointed by resolution adopted by the jurisdiction they represent. And therefore, action is needed by the city council to name a voting delegate to the League's annual conference in Sacramento to ensure that the city can participate in the deliberations." I therefore move that the council determine as provided in Government Code Section 54954.2B2 and pursuant to Rule 23 of the Rules of the Los Angeles City Council, that there's need to take immediate action on this matter and that the need for action came to the attention of the city subsequent to the posting the agenda for today's council meeting. And I further move that the city council adopt the attached resolution and the resolution provides, "Whereas the League of California Cities will be holding its annual conference in Sacramento, California, September 22 to 24 of 2021, and each member city has voting rights for the business items that we considered at the final assembly. And whereas the bylaws of the league require that each member city designate its voting delegate by resolution, now therefore be it resolved that the Los Angeles City Council hereby designates Councilmember John Lee as a voting delegate for the City of Los Angeles to the annual business meeting of the League of California Cities Annual Conference in Sacramento, California on September 22 to 24." So we should begin by taking a vote pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 on the findings. If that passes, then the item will be for council. We can take public comment and after that, the council can then vote on the substance.
Let's go ahead and open public comment. I'm sorry about that. I got ahead of myself. Let's go ahead and vote on the findings. Open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, let's go ahead and open public comment on this item.
Madam President, shall I read the phone numbers? As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press *9 to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press *6 to unmute. Again, call 669-254-5252. Use meeting ID number 1605358466. Press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press *9 to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press *6 to unmute.
And to members of the public, so this is special number one, which regards the designation of Councilmember Lee as a voting delegate to the annual business meeting of the League of Cities Meeting in Sacramento. That's the only thing before council now. So you may only speak to this item and there is no general public comment. So with that, Madam President, we are ready to open up the phone lines or the Zoom calls.
Let's go ahead and take the first caller.
Hi, yeah, about this item. Sending staffer B., John Lee, to Sacramento. I don't think it's appropriate to send someone that's under an FBI investigation to Sacramento. Also, LAPD Captain Alan Hamilton attacked protesters in front of Council President Nury Martinez's house last night. "Nury, you sent your attack dogs after us." And it's all on film.
He's not even on the topic. Get back on topic.
Okay, back on topic. I'm sorry. "Nury, you sent Officer Hamilton to attack protesters in front of your house."
Yeah, you're done. Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Hello?
Yeah, hi. You can speak on special one about the appointment of Mr. Lee to the League of Cities delegation. Do you want to begin?
Yes, Mr. Fable. It's Rob Kwan. I just want to echo the concern. Out of all of you, you choose staffer B. to send off to the League of California Cities. John, I hope you fill out your forms correctly. Disclose any gifts, any excessive tens of thousands of dollar dinners or drinks that get provided to you, hotel rooms. I understand you didn't participate in the escort services, apparently, but you know, all of that should be listed. And I also want to note, you know, Mr. Fable, how is this a Rule 23 motion? Where is the urgency? You really telling me that you had no idea until after the agenda was posted you had to appoint somebody to this event that's happening a day from now or so? It's an absolute stretch of Rule 23. And I'm old enough to remember early on in the pandemic when you were saying you couldn't use a Rule 23 to get through Mike Bonin and David Bruce's motion to deal with the eviction crisis. So just absolutely shameful. Once again, the city attorney just being a lapdog for the person in power and just letting whatever fly.
Okay, there are no more speakers. Let's go ahead and close public comment. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Open the row. Close the row. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, where are we now?
Council has motions for post and referral. Motions will be posted on City Clerk's website shortly after the meeting for the public's viewing. To subscribe to receive copies of today's council motions to your email, please visit clerk.lacity.org.
Okay, those are posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? Mr. Corcoran?
Thank you, Madam President. This month, we appropriately recognized the 200-year anniversary of the independence of Mexico and many other Latin American countries from the King of Spain. And that was an important moment in the history of this city as well. So I also wanted to note that today is the 30th anniversary of the independence of the Republic of Armenia, which is also an important day not just for the people of Armenia and not just for the people of Los Angeles of Armenian-American descent, but really of all people around the world who've been benefited by the end of the Cold War. Because 30 years ago and in the years preceding that, the people of Armenia stood up against Soviet domination, stood up against oppression by the Soviet Union, and it was their courage in rising up and demanding democratic values and governance that really helped lead to the expedited fall of the Soviet Union and the end of the Cold War. And in the 30 years that have ensued, they've endured tremendous hardships. The aftermath of the horrible Spytak earthquake, the war over the independence of Artsakh with Azerbaijan, and the continuing energy blockade and blockade of trade by Turkey and by Azerbaijan that have inhibited Armenia's ability to grow and expand. And yet, still overcoming all of those obstacles, the Republic of Armenia continues to be a model for the rest of the region and a close ally and friend of the United States of America. So I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate the Republic of Armenia on 30 years of independence.
Corcoran, any other announcements, members? Mr. De Leon?
Yeah. Thank you very much, Madam President. I also wanted to add my comments to my colleague, Mr. Corcoran from the Valley. Having the opportunity and the honor to represent little Armenia during my days in the Assembly as well as the State Senate, as you just mentioned a few moments ago, during that conflicted period of Petrustraika in Glasnost within Premier Mikhail Gorbachev, the Armenian people were finally able to be independent of the former Soviet Union. And without a doubt, this past year has been a very, very difficult year for the people of Armenia, given the war that you had just mentioned right now with Azerbaijan and the expulsion of so many Armenians from Arctov. You know, so I want to thank you very much. Today, we do commemorate, we do recognize the 30th year anniversary of the independence of the former Soviet Union of the Armenian people. And because, as we all know very well, the diaspora, the global diaspora, whether you're from what was the former Soviet Union now, an independent, proud nation, an advanced country like Armenia, Lebanon, or Syria, or Iran, or elsewhere. California is home to the largest diaspora of Armenians globally here. And we're so proud of all the economic, cultural, political, gastronomical contributions of the American people. So we raise our hand and we salute the Armenian people. Thank you much, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other announcements, Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I have two announcements. The first is that on this Saturday, September 25th, we'll have our first celebration of the Maes, or Harvest Day, at Stanford Avalon Community Garden located 115th and Stanford Avenue. That's an important location for the city. Some will remember, over a decade ago, there was the farm in the Ninth District where people got forcibly removed. This is one of the places that the city provided for people to garden. They're having their first harvest celebration on this coming Saturday. The second event this Saturday, in the wake of increased homicides this year for the first year in lots of years, our annual Eighth District Peace Walk and Festival takes on graduated significance. This is a day when the faith community, law enforcement, gang interventionist community folks come together and we do a walk through the community and we note the places where folks have lost their lives. And so that'll be this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Seeing none, can we all rise for adjourned motions? Mr. Ridley Thomas, I'll go to you first.
I thank you, Madam President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Mioko Ayashi Drake, who passed on August 2nd at the age of 94. Mioko was born on March 16th, 1927, and was the second of three children. She spent her early years in China and then attended high school and college in Japan, majoring in mathematics at the University of Hiroshima. During her last year of college, the first atomic bomb was dropped on Hiroshima and this left her badly injured. But she recovered and went on to receive her degree a few months later. One of her many trips to the army base, where her aunt taught Japanese tea ceremonies... One of her many trips to the army base, where her aunt taught Japanese tea ceremonies, she met Charles Drake, who she fell in love with and later married. It was in 1955, after the birth of their first son in Japan, Mioko and Charles relocated to the United States, where they settled down and grew their family. She started working as a seamstress. And when her family moved to Los Angeles, she worked as a sample maker for several designers in the L.A. garment industry. In addition to sewing, for her family, she loved walking, completing puzzles, watching romance movies, and listening to classical music. She lived a long, full life, spending time with all five of her children at their homes during her later years. Remarkably, Mioko was able to see five generations of her family in her lifetime. I extend my deepest condolences to her loved ones and wish them peace and comfort during this time. May Mioko rest in peace, Madam President.
Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Members, I ask that we adjourn in the memory of three individuals today, the first of which is Mr. Craig Baptiste Senior. We lost him this past month. Craig worked in the mayor's office of gang reduction and youth development under the Solidad Enrichment and Action Intervention Team. He was a former gang member that had turned his life around and led out in safe passages in keeping the areas around our parks safe. He became known over the years as the mayor of Western Avenue. He was the person in the neighborhood that if someone needed immediate resources or immediate assistance, Craig was somebody that they would go to, and Craig would come to us and say, "You gotta get some groceries, or you gotta get some clothes for this young person, or this person needs a computer." He was a great asset to our community, and we're very sorry to have lost him. May he rest in power. The second one is someone who has spent the principal part of their life as a member of our city family. This past August 28th, at the age of 97 years old, we lost Mr. Ashton Ellis Baker Senior. Like so many of us, he immigrated to Los Angeles from New Orleans, Louisiana, where he started and raised a family, and worked as a custodian for the City of Los Angeles for 35 years, and was our neighbor and an institution in our community. He not only worked for the city for those long years, but he brought along so many that continue to serve our city until this day. And lastly, I ask that we adjourn in the memory of someone who I didn't know personally, but I know the impact that his contribution has had on all of us. Due to COVID complications related to COVID on September 20th, at the age of 61 years old, George Holliday passed away. George Holliday is the person who took out the shaky, grainy video camera in 1991, March, and filmed the Rodney King incident in the San Fernando Valley. And now, we take for granted that we see on television filmings, camera work of everything from George Floyd to a host of other activities, and it is really George Holliday that brought that to us in the first place in our town, and changed the course of history for not only our city, but for the United States. And so, we ask that we remember him on the occasion of his passing.
Any other adjourned motions? Mr. Ridley Thomas?
On George.
To add your name to Mr. Harris-Dawson's adjourned motion? Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you very much, Madam President. On August 4th of this year, we lost Fuquan Johnson, and I'd ask that the council, during this meeting, in his memory. Fuquan Johnson was a rising star in the national comedy scene, resident of North Hollywood, like so many others. He came from New Jersey, as many others do from all around the country, to stake their claim and take their shot here in L.A. He settled in the NoHo Arts District and really became a fixture in our district. He honed his comedy chops on local stages, doing open mic nights and small little gigs, until he got his big break as the opening act for the Wayans Brothers. And from there, his career just took off. He started writing comedy for television and was really on the verge of becoming a nationally-known figure in comedy. His friends loved him, he had a smile that everybody recognized would light up a room, and had an ability to interact with other people that put everyone at ease. And sadly, Mr. Johnson and his fellow comic, Enrico Collengeli, were lost to us because of drugs, and specifically because of fentanyl. And Fuquan Johnson had so many decades of life ahead of him, in which he could have brought joy and laughter to people across this country, but instead, he's lost to all of us because of fentanyl. And, you know, there were more than 90,000 drug overdose deaths in the United States last year. That's almost a 30% increase in deaths from drug overdose in one year, and 60% of those deaths were from synthetic opiates like fentanyl. So while we mourn Fuquan Johnson's loss, and we celebrate his life, and we take joy in all of the joy that he brought to others, and we hope that he rests in peace, I hope that we'll also use this opportunity to rededicate ourselves to ensuring that we reduce the number of people like Fuquan Johnson that are lost because of the scourge of drug overdoses, and particularly around synthetic opiates. May Fuquan Johnson rest in peace.
Mr. Harris-Dawson?
I'd like to be at it. Mr. Kocorian?
Any other adjourned motions, members? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned.